Seven o'clock, May thirteenth. Regular board meeting, called to order, first in camera session, none, treaty land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are signatories of Treaty Five and that we reside in the traditional territory in the Sichawaya Cree Nation. The school district of Mystery Lake is located in the community of Thompson in the province of Manitoba. Manitoba is located on the traditional and ancestral lands of the Nihto Innuk Cree, the Dennisunlin Dene, Meti Inuit, Assinenu Ogie Cree, Anishinaabe Ojibwe, and Dakota Oyata Dakota Nations. The school district of Mystery Lake remains committed to honoring treaties in the spirit of truth and reconciliation. We are all treaty people. We have before us the approval of the agenda tonight. I would like, you are going to correct me, but I caught myself first. I would like to add in addition to twelve point two, the MSBA correspondence. Uh, we have a newsletter from the MSBA regarding um minimum um attendance policy. That'll be twelve point two. Can I have someone move that we accept the approval of tonight's agenda? A trustee Nicholsaw, seconded by a trustee Humby, all those in favor? We have the minutes from April twenty ninth for your perusal. Can I have someone move that we accept the minutes from April twenty ninth? Trustee Young, uh, seconded by trustee Humby, all those in favor? Accepted. Six delegations and presentations, none, business from previous board meeting, none. Item number eight, superintendent of human resources and policy report.
All right, providing the report, um, you can see there are a number of teaching positions posted, but we also have um approximately nine that have been filled, so we're slowly getting through and hopefully we'll be staffed. My goal is to be staffed by the end of June, but I don't want to jinx myself.
We're optimistic.
Yes, I am, and actually, we've signed up, myself and a few other groups of administrators have signed up for three virtual career fairs coming up here very shortly. Uh, one's in French immersion, one's in early years, and I believe one's in special education, so we're going to attend them all virtually and we've, we've split into teams to do that. So I believe one's on the twenty second, um, I think one's on the twenty ninth, and then one's like June fifth or something, so, yeah. So hopefully that gets us a candidate, like again, we're still looking for a French immersion high school teacher. And we, another specialty that's kind of difficult to uh staff for is we need an ideal site teacher, so a special needs teacher at one of the ideal sites. Again, Cree immersion is always a challenge, um, so hopefully we um get some hits from those two, those three career fairs that we're going to attend. I just listed a number of things I've been in attendance at. Um, I'm the district representative at the local emergency response control group that's been organized by the city of Thompson. Uh, the group is married up of various stakeholders within the community, and our current mandate at present is developing emergency response uh in the event that we would ever be in a situation where we had had to totally evacuate the city of Thompson. So um, there's um, we've done a lot of-
Is such a time never happened?
Uh, not in my memory, anyway, no, no, close.
Eighty-nine, we were almost.
Yeah, yeah, eighty-nine, we were close. Again, there uh is a lot of planning and, you know, everyone's kind of trying to troubleshoot different things, so it's, it's coming along though very well. Actually, it's a, it's kind of an interesting um uh group to be involved in, because you just, like the gal that does-
Is it mainly people from different institutions?
Yes, yeah, so it's like the city, us, um wildfires, uh, the airport is a big uh player in this, so yeah, there's a number of people there.
UCF?
I don't believe there was anybody, no representation from UCF when I was there. I can't say that, that, you remember the first meeting, Lauren?
Yeah, no, we had asked, but there was no one.
Um, just the amount and the level of planning that you, like when you really start thinking about getting, you know, this amount of people, and I mean, very likely, if we were to do a full-scale evacuation of Thompson, it's very likely that we'd have other people evacuated from other places already here. So, I mean, you know, so you're looking at the potential of maybe get upwards of having to get twenty thousand people on one road out of this community. So there's a, there's a lot of planning that has to be done, so. I have some resignations and some retirements. Uh, Rizuto Fountain has submitted her letter of resignation effective June thirtieth. Uh, she, she started with the district in two thousand and ten and taught resource at both Westwood and Juniper. She's resigning from her current position as the ideal chief teacher in the ideal site of Juniper School. Mackenzie Boulanger submitted her letter of resignation effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Ms. Boulanger started with the district in two thousand and nineteen and has taught junior high at both Burntwood and Westwood School, and she's resigning from her current position as an English teacher at Artie Parker. Louise Osborne has submitted her uh letter of resignation effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, she started with the district in two thousand and twenty-four in the Cree immersion program at Wapahuck School. Sandra Smeaton submitted her letter of resignation effective June thirtieth. Ms. Smeaton started with the district in two thousand and twenty-one, teaching grade three, and is resigning from her current position as a grade five teacher at Westwood School. We still, again, a reminder that we do, we still have one more resignation date, thirty-first of May.
Of May?
Yeah. So, I mean, those ones generally aren't as significant as the early ones. A, people that have to resign in the thirty-first of May have generally had a, have a lot more time in the division or in the district, so they um are not really looking to relocate. They've all settled in and are, you know, probably are in the last seven to ten years of retirement, if not less, so.
Okay, well, we thank those individuals for their service and wish them the greatest luck. Uh, item number nine, superintendent of educational services and programming report.
I submitted my report, um, made a few add-ons, just um looking at the um March attendance. We had three of our seven schools hit the provincial eighty percent. Six schools did increase their attendance from the previous year, um, and just one school is um, has fallen five percent, so that information is there for you. Uh, first of the framework for learning professional development was provided to the school district on Monday, May fifth. Um, this framework is a new platform for Manitoba education and early childhood. The platform contains all the information required by Manitoba education, so it's now a one-stop. You just go to this um website and absolutely everything is there, um, from curriculum to global competencies, vision, mission, everything is there. Um, so we have a team of five of us. Um, we've attended seven sessions in Winnipeg with other school divisions, um, working through the framework, and the idea is that this, this group now is responsible for training in the district. So we spent um our first day just looking at global competencies, so each of our teachers received the six Cs of global competencies. Um, we all met in the um theater for the first part of the morning, and then after that, we had asked our administrators to break the teachers into the groups, um, because they know their schools best and who would work together best as far as common, common um curriculum, common goals. Um, we had a feedback, an I'd say a survey with over seventy-five percent of the teachers who were in attendance responding, so that's a really high number, that's super impressive, but that gave us um the basis um for our next steps um for the fall. So we will be focusing in on the global competencies individually, because um there's a lot of information. This was really just a overview of what's going on with the um framework. So your team members are Misty McDonald, vice principal over at Westwood School, Kalen Weber, who's our literacy um lead here, Kelly Tate, who's our numeracy lead, uh, Amy Porty has taken the training with the French immersion and myself. And this process is probably going to take a couple of years for the training for everybody. I did send an email to the province in regards to the treaty education training. Um, the mandate is to have all teachers trained by December twenty twenty-five. We are not going to hit that, um, there's just no way. We have seventy-five teachers right now trained. Um, again, it's a very small group responsible for a lot of training. So um, we did receive an extension to June twenty twenty-six, so this means that teachers are going to have to commit to a training session during designated PD days. So we will set those up, um, and then teachers can fill in accordingly. So um Katie Thompson, who is our mental health and wellness coordinator, has been working with the counselors to develop a survey for grades three to eight. Um, we had had some discussion in our education and programming around um getting some feedback from our students. So the plan is to have the surveys completed and analyzed by the end of the year. As suggested, there will be a question on the three schools involved with the relocation of Westwood School, because that was one of the questions that had come up. So that will be there. The survey focuses on the mental health and um physical health of students. Um, there, I went through the, the survey questions once, it's complete, um, I will share it at education and programming uh committee meeting. This data is for internal purposes only, so we will not be sharing out. This will be something that is used for school planning, um, for us, and um, yeah. Um, Shawna Huber, who's our Cree consultant, has been nominated to be part of the K to twelve curriculum development framework for indigenous languages with MSL. So she'll be attending some sessions, the first session she'll be attending, I believe, is June sixteenth, fifteenth and sixteenth. Um, Kelly Tate and Shawna Huber have um been selected to attend the T- uh treaty catalyst training on May twenty-ninth and thirtieth, and this is with MSL and um the TRCM. Selena Dumas um has been nominated to attend the school leadership framework sessions. Um, this was part of the um framework that um I was lucky to be able to be part of the development, and now they're um reaching out to train administrators. We were allowed one nominee, so that's our nominee. Um, Whitney Lennox, Nicole Harwood, and Maria Rigero have been nominated for the K to ten renewal of the science curriculum committee with MSL. Um, transition camps will be happening soon at the Scouts camp. We have um three camps planned with seventy grade eight students um at each of these sessions, and um these will take place the first two weeks of June. We have submitted our elders and knowledge planning um documents to the province with next year's plans, um, and this is with indigenous education or indigenous excellence and MSL. Um, we had to submit our, our plans for next year as lo, as well as our budget. Um, and that's just over a hundred thousand dollars that we submitted. Universally accessible, universal accessible school nutrition program, um, those are due to MSL May thirtieth, I've got all the information out to the principals. Um, they'll get that back to me on the twenty-sixth, and then I will fill out the form and submit that. Um, this year we have one point one three four nine million dollars in our budget for that, which is aside from all the other um dollars that we get. We hosted a newcomers indigenous map night on May eighth at Wapahuck Community School, and this was in conjunction with our community schools as well as our um UCF students that I've had in my class. We had a, a newcomers map night last year. Um, attendance was very, very low last year. This year it was um, it was amazing, we had fifty participants. So um, it was a very, very good event. Uh, we had a potluck and there was a lot of really um tasty food there, but uh, and we also had the newcomers settlement, um, people join us, there were three of them from there. So that was exciting. Um, I met with the Nutrition Council of Manitoba yesterday. They've provided us funding in the past for three of our schools. It doesn't look like we're going to apply for dollars this year for the grants, just because um we're still trying to maneuver with the dollars that we do have. But for them, um, the big piece is around programming and providing support, because uh we have a lack of dieticians in the north, so they still want to be able to do some webinars, seminars come in. Um, we're hoping to actually do some trading, uh, we're going to invite Frontier in the fall and um do some live stations. Just need to set that up. Um, School of Choices due May fifteenth, which is this week, and just a reminder for um kindergarten registration to get those uh in. Yeah, that's my report.
Any questions for either of the superintendents?
When you attend those uh, excuse me, hiring things online, do you find it better if you're in person?
Oh, yeah, but I'm, I mean, just inside, like, this way we're getting to go to three or one, and very specific, like they don't, you don't see that at a career fair that would, would just be like specific for um especially like special needs teachers, like a whole career fair that would focus, that would be the focus, um, time of year. I mean, right now, just to be traveling, you know, to three different locations to attend career fairs at this time of year from, is just not, it's too, it's busy and you're trying to staff. And, and I find that when you do them virtually, um, you may not get as many people come to your virtual booth as say you would in person, but generally my experience is the ones that come are very interested. It's hard to um, because they actually have to join your, your kind of breakout room.
Be someone invested?
Yes, right, whereas when I'm there and I'm like, hey, who are you? And come on over here, and they're just kind of, they don't want to be rude, right? So they come and engage with you, and they have no intention of ever moving to jobs that are teaching here. But yeah, so very often I find, at least when you're doing them virtually, the people that are are coming into your breakout room really have a vested interest in, have an interest at least in the community and ask questions and, you know, give you an opportunity to kind of sell Thompson to them, so. They're not terribly inexpensive to attend though either, but, I mean, the program, like, I don't, I don't carry Education Canada, or sorry, I don't carry, Apply to Teach is a very, very expensive, I guess, kind of recruitment platform. Um, and I, I believe the people, the users have to pay to use it as well, so every time you throw your resume on there, I don't know if they charge you ten bucks, or I'm not exactly sure, but it's extremely expensive. I use Education Canada Network. Um, I had both at one time, and I, I found that I, because I had access to a candidate search on Education Canada, and I would cold call people and just say, hey, how are you? And, you know, I'm the superintendent school division, and we're looking for teachers, is this something you'd be interested in? You didn't have that, you, you weren't able to do that on the other platform. So I had more luck, and the other platform is significantly cheaper. Uh, this, these job fairs belong to um Apply to Education, not Education Canada Network, so, I mean, you're paying for each one. Um, so they're not terribly inexpensive, but, you know, if you can, we can get a couple teachers out of it, it's well worth the investment. I mean, no more expensive than traveling and having to get accommodations and do everything else, but, yeah.
Interesting. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. Item number ten, secretary treasurer's report.
Circulated in your board packages are expenditures as of May seventh. At May seventh, we're eighty-one point three percent through the school year. Year-to-date expenses are thirty-nine million, two hundred thirty-five thousand, six hundred eighty-five dollars, seventy-eight percent of the plan. No surprises still at this point for offering general expenditures. The undesigned operating surplus has been updated with the board motion included now from last meeting to assist with the purchase of uh the school bus. We've taken fifty thousand from surplus, bringing our undesigned operating surplus to one million, six hundred twenty thousand, two hundred eight dollars. Still below the four percent allowed by the province of one point eight five million. Our breakfast and snack programs that are funded from various donors as of May seventh, we have spent fifty-five point five percent uh to address food securities. Year-to-date expenditures, ninety-nine thousand, two hundred forty-seven dollars of the budget of one hundred seventy thousand, eight hundred.
Any questions for the secretary treasurer? Okay, we have before us the recommendations of the expenditures for April twenty twenty-five in the amount of five million, five hundred twenty-six thousand, six hundred three dollars and forty-four cents be approved. Can I have someone uh so move? A trustee Young, seconded by a vice chair? All those in favor? Okay, new business, seen none, correspondence, twelve point one. Terry Fox Foundation twenty twenty-four donation history. We have here a newsletter, a thank you. Dear Hank, oh, shit, tough. It's signed to me, I did nothing. Uh, twenty twenty-four Terry Fox uh school run results are in. It was an outstanding year, and we are so proud to share that schools coast to coast to coast raised close to fourteen million for cancer research. Schools in Mystery Lake School District showed great strength in numbers and leadership by raising nine thousand, two hundred four dollars and sixty-five cents. Congratulations on this remarkable achievement. And uh, Eco Riverside School, last year also marks the first year that we were surpassed, registered ten thousand schools across the country. We are so impressed and grateful for the support we've received. Taking a stride from Terry himself, we have set our own ambitious goal for registering all schools across Canada. We need your help to get there, oh, I think I skipped the Eco Riverside part. Oh, the Eco Riverside, I see, I, I should have read up. In addition, we are pleased to share that the following schools have reached top fundraising status in Manitoba for twenty twenty-four, that's the Eco Riverside School. Congratulations again for this fantastic accomplishment. The future of cancer research is brighter than ever because of students and staff going above and beyond to make a difference, just like Terry did. So thank you to Eco Riverside School, and thanks to all the students who were involved with Terry Fox School Run.
I think Riverside School's been in the top five.
I think, I think we've read this letter before, on previous years, so I want to say that this is not a new thing, no.
Been in the top five in Manitoba for quite a while.
Yeah, so that's uh, that's excellent.
So the year-to-date funds raised, fifty-two thousand, eight hundred fifty-five dollars.
So, yeah, so look, there's a donation history report. Good job, everybody. Yeah, that's outstanding. Total funds raised to date, one hundred twenty-six thousand, six hundred eighty-nine dollars. That's awesome. I remember, did I tell you guys maybe on previous years, when I was five years old, I was at, on a, on a small elementary school on the side of Highway eleven, and I remember the whole school lined up along the fence, along the highway, and the principal said to everybody, it was about three hundred students, and said, you know, everybody look at the hi, the highway, there's a, a marathon runner coming to, to raise money for cancer. We'd done most, much of us in nineteen eighty-two knew, knew who Terry Fox was, but you saw the, saw the, the patrol car, and, and then Terry Fox, of course, and then behind him, I don't know if you guys remember, but his parents drove behind him with a trailer, with a, so that at nighttime, they, they slept together in the trailer, so, and, and I think there was another patrol car, OPP at that time, Ontario Provincial Police behind. And I still remember, uh, I don't know if I was kindergarten or grade one, but uh, I still remember to this day, and then I remember I was still at that elementary school when Rick Hansen, remember Rick Hansen was in the wheelchair doing it, and what year was that, eighty-five, eighty-six? What did Rick Hansen, anyway, it, it led, it led a mark of mine, I remember seeing it, and it was quite something. Yeah, he was a, a brave individual, and those of you who don't remember, for the young people, he passed away, of course, in Thunder Bay, and if you go to Thunder Bay, you can see the, see the large monument there, um, on, on the hill from where Terry Fox passed away, yeah. So he's definitely a hero in my books. So thank you for everybody doing that. Uh, twelve point two, Manitoba School Boards Association, we have in front of us the e-bulletin for this month. See if there's anything especially significant. Join the student services inclusive education committee, rights of students with reading disabilities. Um, there's something there about the Moosehide Campaign Day.
The rights of students with reading disabilities?
Yeah. In Thompson, you're right. Yeah, so I'm going to read that out then, that's a good co, catch. So the rights of students with reading disabilities, for those interested in that, the Manitoba Human Rights Commission is undertaking a special project on the human rights issues affecting students with reading disabilities in Manitoba's education system. For more information, please review the project terms of reference. Throughout the months of May and June, Manitobans are invited to attend the following public consultations on the special project. So like trustee Anderson just mentioned, in Thompson, June twelfth, twenty twenty-five, the Mama Wi Tech Center is hosting at one to four. So if I look at my calendar, June twelfth is a Thursday. So Thursday, and also on June tenth is a seven to nine PM online. So if you're interested in that, you can register online, uh, there's an email here, HRC at gov dot M B dot C A, and that's the Manitoba Human Rights Commission, and that's Thompson, June twelfth, Mama Wi Tech, at one to four. Yeah, thanks for that. We also have a, a bulletin from the Manitoba School Boards Association. They want us to share with our colleagues here in the um, the school board. I think that this is just a routine um letter that they sent out, it's there for your record, but I will read it out just uh to share. Thirty-nine point seven one, the minister may ta, make regulations respecting the holding of school board meetings by electronic means, including providing that a trustee who participates in a regular meeting of a school board through electronic means is deemed to be present at the meeting for the purposes of the act, and this is language um attached to what they call the electronic meetings regulation under the PSA. And then there's also underneath that, the minimum attendance required, so despite the electronic segment uh of the allowance, the minimum attendance required to maintain a member in good standing on a board is that despite the regulation passed under the, the previous subsection regarding online, every trustee must be physically present at a regular meeting at least once every three months. So the once every three months has always been there. I think that it's just to say that that physical presence, that need, is not overridden by the fact that you can't attend electronically. I think our bylaws might say that, so I don't think our bylaws contradict this. So this is just saying what we already know. I think this is just desirous that all school boards in the province have a similar bylaw and abide by such. Cool. Uh, committee reports, thirteen point one, policy committee.
I can report on that. Uh, we attended-
We had a meeting on April thirtieth at five PM. Um, we reviewed policy fifteen, job description of the superintendents, and Jal has taken the task with re, task with research and developing drafts. We reviewed procedural bylaw, sections thirteen, there was no changes, and our next meeting is to be determined.
Super. Uh, thirteen point two, education and programming committee.
Uh, we have not yet since my last report, and our next scheduled meeting is May twenty-seventh at five PM.
Uh, thirteen point three, public relations committee. Uh, thirteen point four, finance property committee.
Uh, we met prior to this meeting, um, the finances reported by the secretary treasurer, everything's tracking positively. Uh, we had a bit of a Westwood insurance update, we're receiving back our RFPs from our invested parties, which will be reviewed in camera. Uh, we've reviewed the maintenance projects for the summer that are, that are uh superintendent, not superintendent, but our supervisor of maintenance has planned, showing us which direction they're going. The Burntwood School structure upgrade uh through StatTech, I believe, is, is there, but we've postponed it because of the extra students in the school. We won't have room to be moving them, so we're- We won't have room to be moving them, so we're postponing that until we can be further along with Westwood and get things back on track that way. We're having an auditor visit for the bill, fifty-seven compensation disclosure coming up, which is due, and our next meeting will be June tenth.
Super. Any other committees, thirteen point five, Bargaining Committee, you guys are meeting?
USW.
Bargaining, we were meeting tomorrow morning, just to get all our ducks in a row. And then we have proposed meeting times, which aren't set in stone yet, to go with the union to get their side. So, that will be in the next probably six weeks-ish.
Any other committees? Manitoba Games, AHEC, Pension. Who am I missing? City liaison, not met since, I think that covers the day. Okay. Any questions for any of the committees? Hearing none. Fourteen, Trustee Comments. Good to have you back, Brother Sharker. You're looking dapper and well-rested. Do you want to regale us with any stories?
I'd like to thank the board for grant my leave for my family reasons. So, on behalf of my family, I'd like to express my thank you to. I had a chance to attend the full MSBA convention with trustee and chair Hank, Honorable, and our subordinate Lori. And I think it's all new, but we would like to thank you and Congress on the chair to be a reason for director as a uncontested. I'd like to thank the Echol Riverside to keeping us in the top ten for the Terry Fox run. And we always feel proud of you and especially for your school, all that's been in sports, science competition, everything.
Yeah, we need to bring Riverside down, I think they're too big to handle. Too, too good.
I heard from one of the colleagues at MSBA conference, so I'm not sure if we are facing like, so they told that they are getting extra tariff, extra tariff, like their vendor is inverse, they're adding extra tariff, maybe their package is coming from the USA. So, are we getting this type of any extra tariff like?
We haven't started yet, but we have received a direction from a provincial controller that we have to report on accordingly, all tariffs that are included in person.
Thank you.
Trustee Nicholas.
Well, welcome back, Andy. Nice to see you, babe. Just, everybody enjoyed a long weekend coming up, have a safe weekend. Yeah, it's going to be a nice, long weekend, so.
You might have to shovel some snow on Saturday.
I hope not.
Really? Oh, okay, you can leave it to us two to do it, okay.
Artie Parker is having a picky, picky draw for the twenty twenty-five prom. I believe it's on that Artie Parker website, I'm not sure, or not Facebook page, sorry. And it's also on, I have shared it on my Facebook page, you just click on a link and buy the tickets. Grade two students that do at school are selling seed bombs for their student, or sturgeon school program. And twenty-three Station Road has pre-owned prom dresses for free to give away to anyone who needs one. So, I believe that was Lil's friend, and her friend member is on Thompson Buy and Sell, she made a post about it. But I'm sure if you go to twenty-three Station Road, there'll be more information there. And that's it.
Is that the Aurora Dance School?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so that's Aurora Dance, cool. Yeah, I mean, I was, a week and a half ago, I was in Winnipeg with the Manitoba School Boards Association for the Executive, but that was my first time. Onboarding took place on the Friday. And on the Saturday, I spent time with my colleagues from the other six regions and also the, the president and the two vice presidents. It was, it was good to meet them, they're good people. And one of the things that came out of the sessions is a real intent for, for trustees to get the word out in about, in about a year and a half, elections happen again, right? And for the city councils, of course, and for the school boards across the province. And those of you who remember the last round of elections, they were kind of underwhelming in the sense that not many people recognize the important work that school districts do and the work that trustees do. And not many residents and voters know what, what trustees do and, and maybe are not interested or not aware that they might be interested in engaging with the civic side of, of running schools. So, one of the things that, that the, the school, the, the school board wants to do is encourage residents to, to find out more about what the school boards are doing, what trustees are doing. And if they're interested in, in, in running for a position, I don't like to recruit my own competition, but, I mean, in order to validate what we do on school boards, we need to have healthy elections and we need to have, the voters need to have choices. And it's important that in the democratic process, that all positions are run for in a, in a, in an accountable and transparent, transparent way. So, that's something we need to work together as, as a school district, but also at the provincial level to, to get the word out so that the next set of elections, that they're healthy and democratic and transparent and that there's a, the voters are given an opportunity to vote. I guess that'd be it. That, that's one of the, the big messages I was given to get out. So, that's great. And, yeah, everybody have a safe, a safe holiday, even Paul. Okay, and we will, can I have someone move, move into camera? Oh, comment from the floor?
No.
No? No? You abstained?
Abstained.
Did I say something, did, did my Riverside friends didn't put you?
There's a hot vacation.
Oh, very well, fair enough. Okay, so I'm going to sing a couple scores from the, from the Little Orphan Annie soundtrack and then I'll let you guys go. Guys, someone move, we move into camera? Trustee Nicholas, seconded by vice chair, all those in favor?
It's not really supposed to snow this weekend.